Half a day. The Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture is now called to order. Today's Monday, September 16th, and the time is 11:05 a.m. In compliance with the open government law, notice for this public hearing was published in the Guam Daily Post on Monday, September 9th, and Friday, September 16th, posted to the government of Guam Public Notice Portal, and is livestreamed via the Guam Legislature's YouTube channel. Notice was also sent by email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets. I'd ask all those who are going to present testimony to please begin by stating your name and affiliation or organization for record-keeping purposes as we are going to transcribe these proceedings. We have one agenda item this morning, that is Bill Number 337-37COR. This is introduced by Roy A.B. Canata. It is an act to authorize Imaga Hagan Guahan to exchange 1,149 square meters of private lot 215-2-1-2 Maena Municipality of Asan Maena for government of Guam land in Dedido to provide for further legal development of a necessary drainage ditch and ponding basin in the municipality of Maena. I'd like to acknowledge the presence of the colleagues who are here with me today. The Vice Speaker, Tina Munia Barnes, is here, and Vice Chair of the Committee on Land is Senator Joanne Brown, and Senator Joseph Augustine is also present here today. Thank you, Senators. So the bill was introduced by Senator Canata, and we will ask that, normally the sponsor begins with an opening statement, so I will ask Senator Son Augustine, who is also a co-sponsor along with Senator Duane S. Nicholas, to give the opening statement on the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, for holding a public hearing on Bill 337 relative to exchanging 1,149 square meters of private lot 215-2-1-2 Maena Municipality of Asan Maena for government of Guam land in Dedido to provide for further legal development of a necessary drainage ditch and ponding basin in the municipality of Maena. To my colleagues and members of the public, I am here today to present Bill 337-37 on behalf of its author, Senator Roy A.B. Canata. This dissertation addresses a persistent issue of flooding in the low-lying areas of Maena. Since 1980, the Guam Department of Public Works has taken proactive steps to alleviate flooding and improve access for residents by constructing a drainage ditch. While this initiative has been effective for over 40 years, recent heavy rains have underscored the pressing needs for repairs and upgrades to our existing infrastructure to prevent further deterioration. It is important to acknowledge the private landowner who has kindly allowed his property to be used for public purposes without receiving any compensation. Given his advanced age and the impact on his property, the landowner has expressed a preference for land exchange as compensation. Bill 337-37 seeks to authorize the legal development and maintenance of the diversion ditch and ponding basin through a land exchange with government property in Dedido, known as Track 11405, which is not part of the Tomorrowland Trust inventory. This exchange tackles the issues of compensation while ensuring that Maena's residents still benefit from this infrastructure, and I thank you, Madam Speaker.
This is Massey, Senator Son Augustine. We'll now hear testimony on the bill from all those who wish to present testimony this morning. Of course, we have Director Ariola, if you would like to present testimony; Director Joe Borja from the Department of Land Management. We also have, of course, the landowner, Mr. Luis Duñez, and John Duñez. If you would like to present testimony, please have a seat at the table. Mr. Duñez, would you like to begin? Thank you for the written testimony as well, that's been passed out to all of the senators. Sorry, foot-for-foot, yeah.
Sorry. My name is Luis Alduñez. I'm the property owner for lot 215, something like that. Anyway, I'm here to support the intent of the bill, but cannot support it with its current language. According to Section 2, line 16 and 17, the bill states that the land and exchange should be on an area-for-area basis. An area-for-area basis exchange should not be considered just compensation. It does not take in consideration the value of my effective property and the value of the proposed property for exchange. Currently, the value of my property in Maena is roughly three times more than that of the proposed lot for exchange in Dedido. In addition, the proposed lot in Dedido is 1,000 feet from the newest hookup that would put a financial burden on me just to get power and water hookup to the property. Although we are appreciative of the efforts put into this thus far to effectuate this land exchange, we request that another lot be recommended for exchange, a tract that is more closer in value and size than the one that was affected in Maena. If there is no lot in the current DLM inventory, we request using CLTC land or ancestral land commission land with power and water. Otherwise, I elect to go with a payout of the appraised value. Thank you.
This is Massey, Mr. Duñez. Director Ariola?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker and Madam Chair. Good morning, Senators. My name is Vince Ariola. I'm with the Director of the Department of Public Works. I'm here to testify in support of this bill. We've basically been working on this bill for probably the last year and a half, if not two years, for Mr. Duñez, and I know just a little bit of the history, but as I understand, many years ago, back in the 80s, they had used the land to direct water that was in the Maena area that seemed to want to go in a certain area, so they were kind of pushing the water toward that one property. And so today, as it sits, it's a semi-ponding basin, culvert, a land area that basically collects water in the area. The area where this piece of land is, it's very hilly, the topography has got a lot of hills, a lot of steep conditions, a lot of curves, and at least from what I've seen, I don't see the property being used for anything but a diversion of water to eventually go down toward, I believe, what I believe is the Fonte River, eventually catching up to that in the backside area. But there's, right now, there's a lot of jungle, there's a lot of bamboo, the land, at least the way I've seen it, and my staff has seen it, is it's unusable. You could probably build it, but is it going to cost you quite a bit to put something on it because of the topography? And so, you know, we've been working with Mr. Duñez here so that he can either get just compensation or something for the land, which, in fact, we are using as a culvert and as a basin to store and to have water pass through, so that's basically our position here with regard to the bill. Thank you very much.
This is Massey. Director, can I ask that you also submit written testimony?
Yes, I will, ma'am.
I think it's important, if this is based on DPW's needs, and DPW have something in writing for us, this is Massey. And Director of Land Management, Mr. Borja, Director Borja?
Good morning, Madam Speaker, Senators. Thank you very much for the opportunity to testify on this bill. My only concern on this bill was the, on Section 2, the site, the section that Mr. Duñez cited, it's a little bit unclear. The last sentence of that Section 2 says, "Land exchange shall be on an area-for-area basis," but the sentence previous to that basically says, "at a suitable equal portion of value." So the two sentences seem to be conflicting. One seems to be a value-for-value exchange, and the last sentence says area-for-area, so I just ask that if the bill were to go forward, that that be clarified, whether it's an area-for-area exchange or a value-for-value exchange. But I think that my comment may have been overshadowed by Mr. Duñez's testimony here before that. And just one last comment, the Department of Land Management, the government of Guam, has only allocated one parcel to use for various land exchanges. That's Track 11405 in Dedido, which originally comprised of 70 acres, and in Public Law 20218, that was given to Land Management to handle land exchanges and future land exchanges. Of the 70 acres, we've used approximately 20 acres for land exchanges already. So that's the only parcel or of land that Land Management is authorized to use for land exchanges, except for exceptions from the legislature, but right now, as it stands, that's the only parcel.
Director Borja, can you please clarify that? You said there are 17 acres that were set aside of that tract?
70 acres.
70, okay.
Seven zero.
So you've used 20, and there's 50 left?
About 50, approximately.
Okay, all right, thank you. I was wondering. Okay. And, but you, so you can verify that there is still land available in this acreage that is needed?
Yes, there is, Madam Chair.
All right, and is there, in your opinion, is it possible to effectuate this land exchange without the legislature, just through Department of Land Management?
You know, it might be possible, now that you brought it up, Madam Speaker, because the land is reserved already, we're using it, but, you know, we always say that the last disposition of government land is with the legislature, and previous land exchanges have been taken through the legislature.
All right, so all of the 20 acres that have been used have been through legislative approval?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
All right, and Director of DPW, you confirm that this property is being used by DPW, and it has been used for 40 years? Isn't this something also that you could have effectuated without legislative approval to, when you need parts of rows or easements, that you have been able to compensate the landowners for those?
Typically, Madam Speaker, the two avenues that I'm aware of is either a land condemnation, a land exchange, or a land purchase, three. And I basically, I bow, I yield to the landman over at DLM, Mr. Borja, and so that's basically how we came to where we are today, is a formulation of a bill that would give Mr. Duñez a land exchange.
All right, if it was compensation, you'd be able to do that? This is something, property that you guys need, DPW needs, the government needs, and you're able to go forward, you said, either with land condemnation or purchase the property if with the negotiations, right?
Right, right.
So that's still available?
That's still available, as I understand, a direct purchase.
All right, that is Mr. Duñez's, I guess, last resort. Mr. Duñez, can I clarify with you? You do not want to pursue a land purchase at this time, you prefer a land exchange? Oh, sorry, can you turn on the microphone?
If there is power and water available.
All right. Director Borja, can you confirm the status of power and water on the lots that we're describing?
The one in Dedido, I believe we've given that information to Mr. Duñez on the distances to the nearest.
How's it?
Yeah, I think it's 1,000 feet, yeah.
So you're saying it's 1,000 feet to power and water, even with the other, is this adjacent to other land exchange property?
Yes.
And those have not brought in?
Not really adjacent, this is a big tract, it's 70 acres. The lots that Mr. Duñez wasn't originally interested in is right behind Familia Market, it's that exit in there.
All right, so, but there are other lots on this tract that are closer to power and water?
Yes, but those have been taken already by previous land exchanges. The ones closest to Route 1 to Isengso, those have been taken, but, yeah.
But they've also had to bring in water and power to their places, right? So, are you saying?
They're closer to the main line, you know, the lots that are available now for Mr. Duñez are kind of deeper into the subdivision, at least 1,000 feet from the main water line, that's correct.
Yeah, you're saying you've got lots already given out?
In the front portion of the subdivision?
Yes, and?
That are adjacent to Route 1?
Right.
I mean, Isengso Road, where the main water lines are. The other people that have done land exchanges, the most recent one is Mr. Santos, I believe, in, from Farm Ha, he has a problem building there because of the EPA concerns about the aquifer, and I believe his situation, I believe, was the impetus for one of the bills that was introduced here. But there is water and power for the lots that Mr. Duñez was originally interested. It's 1,000 feet away from the newest water line that we checked with Waterworks, and there are other land exchanges in there, but those have probably not been developed. The biggest land exchange that I know has developed is Familia Market. That was a land exchange for land down in the, in Alahan Pool, and the guy was fortunate enough to get it right alongside Isengso and?
All right, so is 1,000 feet the closest track, or lot, that we can give Mr. Duñez, the closest to water and power that we can give him from that tract?
Yes, I believe it is.
That's the closest we can get?
We can double-check, but as of last week, when we checked, that was the lots that were available, with closest 1,000 feet.
Mr. Duñez, I appreciate your concerns about the value of the property and the distance from water and power. Can I just ask, Mr. Borja, Director Borja, have there, are you familiar with the values of these properties? Either one?
No, ma'am, I'm not a value person.
I mean, but you have?
I know a person.
Did you do a recent value-for-value exchange, and so you know the value of the lots on the tract?
Yes, like I said, the most recent land exchange was the one with Mr. Santos from Farm Ha.
And that was value-for-value?
I believe that was value-for-value.
All right, is, do we have any idea if this was changed from area-to-area and done value-to-value, what that would look like?
We haven't really, you know, calculated it out. There is a difference, I'm sure there is, but what the difference is, I can't explain right now, you know? But we've done an analysis of the property on value-for-value based on the appraisal, and, you know, and how much it would, he would get if it was in Dedido, yes, we have.
Right, so you know what the value of Dedido property?
From the most recent land exchanges.
All right, and Director Ariola, you have considered use of this property, are you aware of the value or what it might take to purchase this property?
The appraisal that we had done values Mr. Duñez's property at, I believe, $87, about $87,000.
Okay, I'm going to open the panel to the Vice Speaker.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I think the concern that was brought up on Section 2 regarding the area-for-area and value-to-value and looking at the square meters, usually when they do a lot description, it includes all the pertinent information documentation, including the square meters that is attached, and I was hoping that we can get that complete lot description on, because one of the concerns is, as brought up by Mr. Duñez on the chronology of the land exchange petition for the lot 215-2-1-2 breaks down what the utilization for the ponding bases, the flooding and all that in Maena, and then the property that's given based on Public Law 20-2218. If, if we were going to look at those options and those land exchanges and the proposals on, wouldn't it, wouldn't it be more efficient or detailed if we put in the value versus the lot descriptions and the number of acreage that we would be giving to Mr. Duñez on this? I guess I'll ask both government entities here.
If I can, Madam Vice Speaker, you know, I can see where Mr. Duñez is coming from, even whether you do it on a value-per-value basis or an area-per-area basis, I think the big issue here is that he's got a piece of property today that he'd like to develop. The government is using it as a culvert, as a water pass-through, and a semi-ponding basin, so it's basically unusable. And so if I were him, and I can hear him even today, if he's going to get a piece of land, whether it's the same size, 1,149 square meters, or a larger area based on the value, but he still has to put in infrastructure?
It's not.
That's, that's almost a no-brainer on the decision there, because outside of his property, there's a paved road, there's power, and there's water relative available. The only problem is, you can't build on it because of the topography, and it's being used as a semi-river ponding basin type because of what transpired back in the 80s. And so that seems to be the big issue, is how much money Mr. Duñez and/or his family is going to have to fork after, after he receives some exchange of land somewhere up there in Dedido. If it's 1,000 feet away from power, water, cable, telephone, that's going to be a pretty penny.
That's going to cost more than if he were to get an outright payout for the infrastructure to be laid down, I know that personally, trying to build a house, yeah.
Vice Speaker, if I may interject, I'm just going to be very frank with the two of you directors, I'm not sure, but this bill obviously has no legal description of the lot, it does not have the acreage, it doesn't have any alternatives, there's no written testimony as to value or acreage or the possibilities of addressing any of his concern, and that is an issue, like, we need to know the facts, we really need the facts laid out, so I'm asking you two directors to please submit written testimony, if you know the acreage that we're talking about, if you could testify as to that, the fact that it really, to verify, you know, that it's been used and usable or not, and all of that information, we really do need that in writing. This is Massey.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and as I share the same sentiments, I want to make sure that this is a win-win for the government, and of course, our constituent, our signee, who literally has shared that he was very respectful, very accommodating, very giving, and this effort is, and as he said about, in his senior years, he'd like to see what else could be considered, so I think it's important that we have all those descriptions down, but offer, just, but to see if there was an offer in the alternative, so that the Duñez, Mr. Duñez and his family would be amenable to. Has that happened, has that consideration been brought to the table for Mr. Duñez? Land Management? Public Works?
Of other lots, excuse me?
Not of lots, but compensation as a consideration?
Not, not with Land Management, I mean, you know?
Is that doable?
With Public Works?
With Public Works, has that been done in the past, and is that doable?
We've bought, has Public Works bought private land for the uses of Public Works? Yes, absolutely. We do it for roads, we do it for intersections, we, I haven't, at least in my time, I haven't recalled a purchase of a lot for ponding basin uses or whatever.
We, you know, and thank you very much for that question, Senator, but we really don't plan in our budget for compensation later on, so if you can, if you say, is it doable financially, funding-wise, no, we can't offer that to Mr., you know, we can't offer that to Mr. Duñez because we don't have the money to do it, only the legislature can do that. Now, Land, Public Works has condemned properties, but they have to come actually to the legislature first before doing that eminent domain proceedings.
Just, just to, just to be clear, the condemnations that we do are with federal highway, so we use federal funds on that, you know?
And?
But I've never done one with local funding.
Right, so in this case, could there be a possibility in looking for resources to compensate Mr. Duñez for the utilization of this, is that a possibility?
Yes, absolutely, there's, it's always, it's always a number, and then it's always the funding source.
Right, so, Madam Chair, if I may, as I look at this bill and I look at the timeline, that we should have, we should have been working closely with the Duñez family, I think that we should ask Public Works to see what ramifications can be afforded to Mr. Duñez in both the area, the value-for-value or area-for-area, and see what he would be amenable to if both presentations were in front of him, because I know that his biggest concern is, you're going to give me a property in Dedido, but that property does not have utilities, water and power within 1,000 feet, just to do 100 feet costs $20,000 to $30,000, let alone 1,000 feet, you times that, Mr. Duñez will not, it would not be a fair proposal for Mr. Duñez. So I'm hoping that with the timeline, Director Ariola, that if there is a possibility to at least look for that so that we can amend it to this proposal, I think that it would be, it would be good to at least have that on the table, and we don't know, Mr. Duñez may be able to work it, but the funding source would not come from the general fund, but it would be from the coffers of the federal resources that are already there. Is that a possibility?
Not for this piece of property, unless we have a federal project going through that piece of property, right? So this would, this would purely be a local, locally-funded project.
So it wouldn't be a part of any federal, even if there was a water project going through there, or not on an upgrade?
Yeah, and I don't know of one currently going through that piece of land.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. See what else we could do on this arena.
This is Massey, Vice Speaker. We also don't have maps on the property, so if we could also get maps that show area-for-area or value-for-value, if you can determine that.
Madam Speaker, and again, I apologize, you will have my written testimony by tomorrow, and you'll have the appraisal.
All right.
And the appraisal shows?
All right, thank you. Vice Chair Brown?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, I certainly agree, I think it's a little challenging for us to kind of address this issue with this current bill as it's written, without knowing, of course, what is the appraised value? bill as it written without knowing, of course, what is the appraised value of the property and the area. And, you know, I appreciate Mr. Duñez coming forward and providing his testimony because he has many other landowners on Guam, and particularly as we get down to southern Guam, there's been property over the years that has been taken by the government, including the roads that we drive on a regular basis that are not owned by the government of Guam. And these private landowners have been literally providing for free the opportunity of our people to travel over their property. And as time has gone on and upgrades are made, I know that DPW has addressed those issues. Anytime you need to do repairs, rebuilding, I know there are parts of southern Guam we can't even do with federal money because it's not owned by the government of Guam. I think the challenge here is if we are unable to provide property that is of value-for-value or the whole issue of accessibility, because, yes, you know, the connection of utilities is very expensive. I mean, if you have to lay a water line, a water, you know, power line, you know, where you're talking thousands of thousands of dollars, and GPA will give you a breakdown on the cost of each power pole and what it's going to cost to put all that in. So it's not, I assume, property that's readily available to construct unless you have the additional financial resources to do it. I do want to caution the language in this bill that says, well, if we can't provide that, then let's take it out of CLTC or take it out of the ancestral lands. I'm not one, you know, I don't like to bleed into, you know, saying I'm all for ancestral lands, I'm all for land trust, but whenever it's convenient for the legislature, we just extract out land and use it as a land bank for whatever other need the government may have. I don't think that supports the intent of why the land trust, in all its frailties, was created or the Ancestral Lands Commission. So I have reservation of any intent to take out any assets that were intended by these particular programs for those particular purposes. So I don't see that as an option because, again, I don't see the decision to create the land trust or the ancestral lands with the intent of using it as a land bank for anything else the government of Guam may want to do now or in the future. Mr. Duñez, I wanted to ask you if you are dissatisfied with the property that has been proposed for you, and I don't know, I assume, have you had a chance to go up and look at this property or lot that's being proposed for your land exchange?
We drove around the area, but we don't know the exact place.
Okay, and nobody, no government official has come out to show you what the potential, you know, like from, you know, before we said the mango tree to the coconut tree, but to be able to give you a general idea of what property. So that puts you at a tremendous disadvantage because you don't know what you would be agreeing to at this point.
Correct, correct.
Is that something Director Borja from Land Management to assist Mr. Duñez in having some idea of what potential lot? You know, I'm sure you have the maps that you can provide, but to go out and physically show him where this potential lot could be to get his feedback?
Of course.
And is there a possibility, I don't know if these lots are already subdivided, or let's say we estimate the value of the water's going to cost X amount or the power's going to cost X amount, is there a way we can calculate that into land value and perhaps enlarge his property from what it may have been so that at the end of the day, it's really a value-for-value exchange so that knowing he's going to have additional cost for power or water that, you know, maybe that can be compensated of additional property? Maybe he might be willing to agree to that. I don't know. I'm just saying, is that a possibility?
Well, that'll depend entirely on him, and at that point, it's really not a, I guess, not a pure land exchange in that issue. And if the bill was going to be redrafted to make that additional amount or amount, you know, available, rather than leaving it up to Land Management to say, okay, you needed $1,000, but, you know, if it's not in the bill, we might be.
Well, maybe it could be exchanged instead of area-for-area to value-for-value, right? I mean, he's at a total disadvantage now because his property's already been taken for a number of years and the situation that it's being put in for discharge of, especially now on the rain we've had over the last week, you know, for the discharge of water to alleviate flooding in the surrounding areas, really has given him property that really he cannot use with any consistency, I'm assuming. I'm assuming. I don't know where this lot is in Maena. I know Maena is a low-lying area, but is that, I mean, is that in all fairness what the current situation is with his private property? If I can ask Mr. Ariola?
Yes, Senator, it is, it, the topography, it's, the appraisal calls it slightly sloping. I think it's more than slightly sloping. I'm very familiar with this property, like I've worked with Mr. Duñez and I've visited it several times, but it is being used as a catchment basis. And as you said, with today's rains, there's, there's just, I'm not an engineer, but you could probably build something, but that's going to, it's going to cost you something. Anything's possible, right?
It might be expensive, or you're going to end up being flooded out, probably. Those are the odds, one or the other. So, I mean, I'm not in opposition. I certainly think that Mr. Duñez as a landowner needs some resolution because, I mean, it's, I don't gauge he wasn't consulted at the time his property was taken. So, I mean, it's almost, you know, we get mad at the federal government for coming in here and doing all the land takings, but the government of Guam, in its own way, has, to a certain degree, done the same thing of going in and taking properties for public use without compensation to the landowners. And I think, Mr. Duñez, it would be helpful, I mean, Mr. Borja has relayed that his office can provide you assistance. Perhaps, Mr. Borja, maybe today before we all leave, maybe you can coordinate a time at least to go up and see the property and have someone direct you or show you, if not Mr. Borja himself, who I know has his expertise, where the potential property could be so that you have an idea whether or not that's agreeable. And if it's not, then maybe, you know, we come back to the drawing board and look at a bill that gives you value-for-value or compensation, financial compensation, if that's the best option so that you have some sense of feeling whole from this essential taking of your land. So that at the end of the day, the government has your land to use for its intended purpose, and then you also are compensated one way or the other, either through the land exchange if you find that agreeable, if you know what your boundaries are in Dedido, or, you know, we simply appropriate the funds to compensate you for your land so that you're paid for your land being taken by the government.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. I appreciate that. Hopefully, we can get some feedback. But I agree, Madam Speaker, I don't think in the current form of this bill without the specific information to make a decision and then agreement from Mr. Duñez. So I think it'd be very difficult to move forward with this particular version of this bill. But thank you for the opportunity to respond to my questions. I appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Sisus Massey, Senator Brown. Senators Sinagastin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Ariola, what is the size of the property we're talking about? What's the size of the property?
The size?
Yeah.
Mr. Duñez's property?
Right.
It's about 1,150 square meters. So it's less than half an acre.
I was about to say that, less than half acre. What is the size of the property, Mr. Borja, that you were looking at up at Dedido? Is it a half-acre lot?
Those properties have already been subdivided. They're about 1,858, and you're limited to the size of the properties because of the aquifer below it.
Okay. Okay, so it's what he said in Dedido. So you wouldn't match his size that he identified, Maena's? It'd be bigger. It'd be bigger in Dedido?
A few square meters if you're going to go with area by area.
Okay. So I think it's right that we get a copy of the map and the exact size and what the appraisal value is, and then we work from there. Because this bill can be amended to meet what Mr. Duñez is ready to testify on. We don't need to start a new, new bill. We can just amend the bill. The committee can amend it, and we can work it from there and then move forward. And we just bring closure to Mr. Duñez. This should have been over a long time ago. It's too long. It's over 30 years old now. 30 years ago. This should have ended a lot earlier. And with that, that's how I want to approach this bill, and I'm a co-sponsor, is that we get the information and we allow the committee to make the appropriate amendments, and we just put closure so Mr. Duñez can move on and do what he needs to do, maybe compensation or land, or compensation to cover the infrastructure needs in the Dedido lot. All right? And thank you, Madam Chair.
Sisus Massey, Senators Sinagastin. Director Borja, so you're confirming that if we did an area-for-area exchange, that Mr. Duñez would be giving up 1,150 square meters, plus or minus, and that the lot he would receive in Dedido is 1,858 square meters?
The lot in Maena is 1,149 square meters.
Okay.
And one of the lots in the land exchange subdivision in Dedido is 1,853. The sizes in the Dedido lot varies by a few square meters, but they have to be a minimum of 1,858 or half acre because they're over the aquifer. And even with that, though, EPA has held up some building permits in the area because of.
Depending on the sewage or the septic tank. All right.
Correct.
So the 1,858, Mr. Duñez, that's a little bit larger than the 1,149 square meters. Do you agree the area of your property is approximately 1,149 square meters? And do you agree, have you seen the appraisal of the property that DPW has done?
The appraisal is $87,500.
Okay. And, all right, and Director Borja, can you confirm in Mr. Duñez's attachment to his testimony? He put in chronology of this land exchange, and he says in May 2021 that you, Director Borja, sent a letter to Director Ariola seeking information to support a land exchange or, quote, "confirm government action" and to certify that the trespassery occupancy of Mr. Duñez's lot solved the flooding/ponding issue, unquote. Was that letter sent? Do you have that?
I don't have the letter with me, but I believe the letter was sent, yes.
All right, so we have confirmation about all of these facts. All right, that's what I want to know. I'd like to see those if possible. Okay, so, Mr. Duñez, if the legislature is willing to just compensate you for the land, are you willing to move forward that right away? Or you have three options, as you said, the area-for-area, where you would be actually receiving about 700 square meters more than your current property area, or the value-for-value, and you know the value of your land, and Mr. Borja would carve out a part from Dedido that is approximately that same value, or just a straight-out purchase, local purchase of this property by DPW?
The only thing I'm interested in is the water and power. It's going to be a burden on me putting water and power. That's all. Otherwise, I would get the fair compensation.
All right. Okay, so, Mr. Borja, Director Borja has promised to take you to the property or have someone take you there and discuss in more detail perhaps what it looks like, the difference in size, and perhaps the value. And we will further follow up on this bill when we receive the testimony from DPW as well. So I want to thank you, Mr. Duñez, for your patience with the government of Guam in resolving this, and thank you for your insistence that you receive justice in this regard as well. Sisus Massey. And that being said, the sponsor have any closing remarks? If not, then we will consider the hearing on this bill, 337-37, duly heard, and we will, the hearing is adjourned. It is now 11:50 a.m. Sisus Massey.